Good evening and welcome to the Village Board Meeting, the annual organizational meeting. Sorry to be talking to you all masked. I have someone in my life who is a bit fragile at the moment, and I'm taking extra precautions. So an exciting night this year because we have the opportunity to have John Curley issue the oath of office to both Nicole Asquith and Paul Alvarez. Nicole returning for a third term, Paul returning for a second term, both convincingly winning in a contested election. So congratulations to the both of you, and thank you for lining up. And John Bukel is about to become our new justice. But perhaps the overarching story here is that all of these three oaths will be delivered by Judge John Curley. A judge decided to hang up his robes as of tonight and hand them, hand the scales of justice over to John, who also ran a contested election and won with a very substantial majority of the community, for which we congratulate you. We look forward to having you as part of our village community, as you have been in so many other ways. You just add to it. I caution you that John is now ending a 33-year run, including what, six or seven years as as the acting justice and 25, six years, something like that as justice. So you're signing on for a minimum 33-year commitment, and we're going to hold you to it. So as is our habit, we're going to invite John in his final acts as our longstanding village justice to issue the oath of office to Paul, to Nicole, and then to John. And then after everyone has, has agreed to the terms of office, I will invite each of you to say a word about your new moment and your new term. And last but certainly not least, invite John to make some comments. We will, and I'll have a little more to say about them. So welcome Judge Curley.
Thank you.
Nicole's waiting for her family. Are they there?
They're here.
They're here. All right. First in the agenda is the oath of office to trustee Nicole Asquith.
I'm going to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Nicole Asquith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the municipal code of the Village of Pleasantville.
And the municipal code of the Village of Pleasantville.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
My duties as village trustee.
My duties as village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
All right, Paul, if you're willing.
Yeah, I should have had my kids come on. I think it was so strong.
Please do.
Give me more honesty.
If only you can raise your right hand.
Raise your hand. I, W. Paul Alvarez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the municipal code of the Village of Pleasantville.
And the municipal code of the Village of Pleasantville.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
My duties as trustee for the village.
My duties as trustee for the village.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, John.
Paul, sir. Sir, raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your name. I, John Bukel. Do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of New York. The Constitution of the State of New York. And the municipal code of the Village of Pleasantville. The municipal code of the Village of Pleasantville. And that I will faithfully discharge my duties. I will faithfully discharge my duties as village justice for the village justice court. As village justice for the village justice court. According to the best of my ability, according to the best of my ability. So help me God, so help me God. Congratulations. You're welcome.
All right, Nicole, would you like to offer a couple of thoughts as you launch into term three?
Sure. I have notes, but I'm not sure how you put that. So well, thanks to those of you who came tonight. It's nice to have some company. I wanted to quickly thank Mayor Peter Scher, who was really the first one to make me think that this was a worthwhile thing to do. I want to thank my fellow trustees who make this a pleasurable endeavor. We work really well together and we each bring something different to the table, and it makes the whole thing a much more enjoyable undertaking. So thank you sincerely. And I also want to thank the village staff. Noreen, I love you. And particularly Eric and Alyssa, who often feel calls from me at random times about all kinds of different things that I'm trying to do. And so I'm very grateful. And we are all lucky here in Pleasantville to have such a great village staff. So I just wanted to say quickly that we have a lot of things on the agenda. You know, there's the moratorium on development in the downtown. There's the new pool. There's the possibility of civic space. There are all kinds of things. But as a village board that we're considering, and I wanted to say that my general outlook, when I think about all these things, is going to be to take what I think of as a holistic view of Pleasantville. So to describe it, shortly before the election, I was asked by the Women's League of Women, the League of Women's Voters, to write a short, very short description of what I thought the priorities for our municipality were. And so I thought, well, how am I going to do this? How am I going to sum up what Pleasantville is in, you know, very, very short paragraphs? And so I thought of three things. One is the fact that we have this vibrant downtown where you can walk to all sorts of wonderful cultural events and restaurants and cafes and so on, that has also connected to New York City with the train. The second is the proximity to nature. When I first moved to Pleasantville, the first thing that I really fell in love with was hearing the birds in the morning. So the combination of having those two things. And then the third, and I think the most important, is the community, which is really this very unusually warm and tight-knit community. I have this idea for those of you who have watched Gilmore Girls, that Pleasantville is sort of like a hipper version of Stars Hollow. For those of you who haven't watched Gilmore Girls, Stars Hollow is this sort of fantasy New England town in which, you know, the people gossip at the newspaper stand and everybody knows everybody. But it's also vibrant. You see people walking around all the time. And it has sort of the best of what cities can offer and what country can offer. And Pleasantville really has all of those things. So without getting into the details too much of the specific issues, I just want to say that in thinking about, you know, building community spaces and thinking about development and all those issues, I want to keep those three aspects of Pleasantville in mind. So I want to think, you know, what can we do to preserve nature here? What can we do to, you know, keep our trees and plant more trees and, you know, coexist with all of the creatures who live here, which incidentally includes bears and bobcats, just in case. What can we do to make our downtown vibrant? You know, how can we fill the empty storefronts? How can we, you know, continue to build on that? And also, what can we do to maintain that really integral sense of community, which I think more than anything is what makes Pleasantville Pleasantville? So I want to have all of those things in mind and to think about that as a way to really balance things, balance all those priorities in the choices that we are making going forward. So thank you so much. Looking forward to a third term.
Welcome, Paul.
Thank you, everyone. I think that this time would be easier, but actually, this is my first time doing this this way because the last time was during COVID, so my swearing-in ceremony was during Zoom, so it was a little bit different. I remember wearing a suit here, but I've worn shorts to the bottom. How comfortable I was the last time I did this, but.
It's happened since, I want to point out.
This is a lot better. So first of all, I think that my spirituality to me is very important. It's a part of me that's so strong that it balances with the person who I am. And I thank my mother for that. Without her, I don't think I would have that. It's really, really important to me. I'd like to start thanking my family. Kate, Brendan, Madison. You're the reason why I do all this. You're the reason why I strive to do the best that I can do to help others to lead my life by example and to show you what we can do if we work hard, we work with others, and if we essentially try to make the world a better place. You're always there to support me during all the hard times. You're always there to forgive me when I can't be home. And I need that. It's essential for me to be able to succeed, and I couldn't do it without you guys. That also goes, same with my extended family. Odyssey, my mom, Ritsa, my dad, and Guillermo. They're, they've been the ones that have always raised me to our heart and to do everything that I do and have pushed me in every single way to go for my dreams and go for what I've always wanted. My sister Michelle has been a shining example of someone who follows her dreams and someone who doesn't try to live in her brother's shadow, but creates her own dreams, creates her own achievements. And I love that. I'm so proud of her. My extended family, my in-laws, they're like my parents, Nancy and Tim. My sister-in-law, Emmy, my brother-in-law Blake, and my little niece Chloe. I love them all so much, and they're such an extended part of my family. They're also is always there with me in all these kind of events that I do. This is all my, my, my Latino community overall. A mi familia ecuatoriana, a toda mi gente latina les doy gracias por siempre dejarme ser su voz y representante. Con la bendición de Dios y con el esfuerzo, todos se pueden, todos siempre se pueden. To my friends, to my colleagues, to my colleagues on the board, to my friends and staff that support the village, to Eric, to Alyssa, to all the heads of the different departments that are always helping me and whatever ideas I come up with trying to do things for the village. It's never a no, it's always a what else can we do? And without having a team, without having all the different heads of different departments, we can do the things that we do. So I'm so thankful for always having my back in any ventures that I take a part of. Their support is crucial to anything that I achieve and that I can achieve for the village. To my staff and my law firm. Also, they're so essential because if they are not holding the fourth down, while I'm not there, I can't do this job properly. So without them, I really couldn't do another job. I couldn't perform anything else that I do. So the fact that I know that my business is in good hands and all that my clients are in good hands is really important. So my staff, I really am blessed to have them all. To my fellow candidates that ran, to Francesca Hades. I want to thank her for running. I think having an elected, contested election is incredibly important. It just shows democracy in place and shows that people really come out to vote. It allows us to really go out there and have a stance on different issues and create dialogue between a lot of different people. So I think it's so important to do that. So Nicole, thank you for this journey. It's been awesome from the day that we started campaigning and canvassing and essentially getting just to go to all the houses in what was 32-degree weather, where some people closed the door in house before we got there, to, to having a couple of times that we went to different places and met with people publicly. It's been awesome to share that with you and to gain a friendship with you now that I really value. Just thank you for that. And the rest, to, last but not least, to my constituents, my neighbors, to everyone that I, that I work with. I thank you for trusting and believing in me to be your trustee for the next three years. I'll do everything I can to be your voice. There may be times where we may, we may not see eye to eye, but just always remember that more than likely, you and I are going to agree on more things than not. So feel free to always talk to me, feel free to always come up to me, and let's have a discussion. I think we all have, you know, the same idea that we want this place to be what we love and be a pleasant, be a Pleasantville. I've grown up, I've been a resident for 30 years. I've seen a lot of change, I've seen some good change, some bad change. But, you know, I think what I'd love to offer is that I can be someone who's been in the past, but I can also help us transition into the future and be able to not lose its values of family, good people, and a village that supports each other. So I hope that that continues, and I thank you again for giving me that chance. I'm happy. I feel blessed, and I'm excited for our new Pleasantville for the next three years. Thank you.
Well, I believe I have the honor of introducing the honorable Justice Bukel for the first time.
Thank you, Mayor Scher. Thank you, trustees, Judge Curley, everyone here who makes the village work, and all attendees. I'm glad you're here, and I'm glad to be here. First, I'd like to thank my family, my wife Stacy, my son James, my daughter Alexandra, my mom Justa is here, my brother Simon. Each of you tests, shapes, guides, and calms me. Yes, calms me, even James. I love you. I'd like to thank my friends, our friends here in Pleasantville. I'm tempted to say that they did almost anything I asked of them during the campaign, but it didn't actually work quite that way. What happened actually was a little more surprising. I told them I was running for village justice. I told them why I was doing it, why I wanted to do it, why I was pursuing it, how I was going to do it, and then you just helped. You gave me advice, some of it unsolicited, most of it pretty good. You told your friends, you made introductions, you asked for lawn signs. I barely asked, you just did it. I'm not quite sure why, but I'll never forget it. This was an interesting campaign. Many people don't know we have a court. Many don't really know that we have a justice necessarily. They don't realize it's an elective position. It's been so rarely contested. It last contested, I believe, 12 years ago. Before that, I don't know why, sometime last century. So I saw all of this as a welcome challenge. I worked to educate people about the court and about our legal system. I tried to instill trust that our court will be, continue to be competent and fair, to help people understand, understand why any of this matters, why they should care, why they should vote. I think those messages resonated, helped along in large part by the fact that our village court had been so well-run. And for that, we owe an incredible gratitude to Judge Curley. And with that, I think we also owe great thanks to Judge Collins, unfortunately couldn't make it tonight, and to court clerk Stephanie Tim Austin and Kristen Surrace who are here. Thank you. And I so look forward to it. So the campaign has had its funny, it had its funny and very memorable moments for me as I spoke to so many people across the village. There were people who wanted to talk about something that has nothing to do with the justice position. Mr. Mayor, I think you can guess what it was. Development is a big topic. There was the woman who.
That's why I didn't run for justice.
There was the woman who quite literally praised the Lord after learning I was not there visiting her to tell her about a new assisted living facility at the Methodist church property. There was the guy who answered the door, and as I was explaining to him why I was running for village justice, he's standing there, all wild clouds of some kind of substance was wafting out of his front door. There was the woman who wanted assurance that I would carry on Judge Curley's ability to see through people's BS. There was the couple who told me about their ongoing many landlord-tenant litigation that they've been dealing with as, as property owners, which led to a very intense discussion about the takings clause in the Fifth Amendment of the United States Constitution. And there was a gentleman who wanted to, wanted to see if I might help him sue a certain former ex-president and that ex-president's son for a real estate deal gone bad. I'm going to let you guess who he was talking about. But the more important takeaway from all of this was with this, we live in a wonderful place. Not everyone agrees on everything, but I think we all want very similar, similar things in life. The campaign helped confirm for me that if you treat people with respect, much more often than not, they'll treat you with respect as well. I think all of this will be valuable to me as I take on the role of village justice. I'm truly humbled by the election results. Everyone had a choice, multiple choices, actually. You could vote, or you could stay home. You could vote for me, or you could vote for some other very good candidates. I'm humbled that so many came out to vote and that you chose me. So as I prepare to take this office, I do have a few other things on my mind, knowing there are others from outside the village borders who are watching me. First, I'm thinking about the Albanian-American community. I don't know how many other Albanian-American judges there have been in New York or anywhere else in the country, actually. Maybe some, maybe none. But I know the response I've gotten since news of my election went out to the community has been filled with pride, and I feel it too. My parents immigrated to the United States. My brothers and I were born here. At home, we spoke the Albanian language, listened to the music, and grew up dancing in a church-organized folk dance ensemble. We learned about the persecution that my parents and their ancestors and our people faced in their home lives, the struggle that led many of them to come to the United States, the injustice that my immediate family faced helped shape my perspective, and it was an impetus for my going to law school. I and my brothers faced the challenge that so many first-generation Americans have faced and continue to face. And I know I'm not the only one in this room right now who's grappled with this, how you honor the old country and its customs while fitting the new. The answer to that was made obvious to me by my absolutely brilliant parents. They saw through the fog and viewed the quintessentially American values to instill in us. You study hard, and then you study some more, and then a little bit more. You work hard. If there's an opportunity, you take it. And you try to find joy in whatever you're doing and make that joy grow. I try to follow those values, and I know that's why I'm here. Second, I'm thinking about my father. The day we moved into our home in Pleasantville, I drove up from the city ahead of Stacy and our little kids, ahead of the moving truck. I got the keys, did a quick stroll through the house, and then came back out, and my father was there. My father, his name was Sokoldev Bukel. He pulled into the circular driveway. He was our first visitor. He wasn't in the grace of the palate at the time, but he got in his car and drove if he wanted to be there. Before we went in, we stood in the driveway in the sun and just looking at the house. And I remember saying something to him about how crazy it was as Stacy and I had just bought this 200-year-old house. And he kind of agreed it was crazy, but then he reminded me of those quintessential values. He said something like this, "You put in the work for this, and you like this crazy old house, so it's the right house for you. You saw the opportunity and you took it." He was so proud that we'd become homeowners here. I can only imagine what he had said about me throwing myself at this opportunity to run for justice, to serve our community. I know he's watching now, and I know he's very proud. And third, I'm thinking about my brother Nick. Nick never got to see us move to Pleasantville. But I know he would have loved spending time here, particularly with his niece and nephew. Nick was a historian with a special interest in the Civil War. He would have loved knowing that our home was on land owned by Moses and Esther Pierce, great supporters of the Underground Railroad, who themselves took the enslaved in their home and kept them safe. Nick had a strong sense of right and wrong, so he would have loved this mission that I'm taking now as village justice. Yes, to apply and follow the law, of course, but so much of this role will be about understanding people and why they do what they do and finding solutions that are reasonable, fair, and constructive. I've got a lot of support to guide me on that mission from our community, from the excellent groundwork set for years by Judge Curley, Judge Collins, and our court clerks. But whatever I do, I'll be thinking about my brother Nick, and I know he'll be watching. Thank you very much.
So it is a great night always to welcome people into a new term. And sometimes a renewal of a term, sometimes as the case of John, an entirely new one. And it always reminds me, having sat here at this table for quite a long time, of how good this community has been at bridging the past, the present, and the future. And certainly, what we've heard here tonight is a manifestation of all of that. Folks who are in this room, honestly, for the same reasons we all are, and yet who have come to this place in various different ways. Paul, the son of immigrants brought here at eight, what, six?
I came here at nine.
Nine, learned English in the Pleasantville library, graduated from the Pleasantville High School, went to PACE, became a lawyer, and is now in the position you now see. Nicole, wandering around in various places in Europe, in California, from Brooklyn to here, no doubt with some trepidation, and yet landed here, took root, and as you heard from her, has a unique capacity to knit together these various pieces of her lives and show how they can blossom here in this community. John, your moving remarks. Delighted to have you. Delighted to know so much more about your past, which obviously will inform your life going forward. And it is really a very special night to thank John Curley for what can only be described as a very Pleasantville-like arc of a career. As a lawyer, as a judge, now 33 years involved in the Plenipotentiary Justice Court across several generations of folks who have come before him, and yet was a steady figure, a responsible figure, a fair-minded person who never once in those 33 years left anyone with the sense that they weren't dealing with a person of integrity, of humanity, and of fairness. So welcome Judge Curley. Now, we'll have plenty more to say to you at a retirement dinner later on in the month. If, if anyone is not aware of that and is interested, they should get in touch with Stephanie Tim Austin and the court clerk, court office. But for the moment, it couldn't be more appropriate to end this ceremony with comments from our longstanding and distinguished Judge John Curley.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your warm words. It's been a long time. I currently lay Paul and Nicole on your reelection and your service, continuing service to the community. It is part of what Pleasantville is, people getting the drive to go out and represent people and help the village move on this, you two are, and take it up, and I thank you. And Mayor, you've been, you're, what, 16 years?
Going into 15 now.
15.
Seven more as trustee, so.
Yeah.
Don't tell my wife.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. You're well-deserved. You have had a wonderful campaign. And I just hope that you get as much sense of reward from the position as I have over these years. Every once in a while, you'll get a chance where you'll actually make a difference in some of these things. It doesn't come frequently, but it does come every once in a while. And that's what keeps you going, and it's the main thing. I know we've spoken about this before, and it's was your whole desire to become the village justice. Well, you got it now. Make sure you're going to do a great job with it. A tip from my wife to your wife. She said that now that you are the justices' spouse, you'll be introduced and people will ask you, you know, judges, what? And my wife's answer is, "Thank you." You're going to have, I see your two children. Their ages?
13 and 9.
13 and 9. When I was first made for justice, I had three children. Their ages, 3, 6, I don't know. Thank you. Daughter, my son was a year class freshman.
Your daughter was a year younger than me, or your son was a year older?
That'll be.
Don't rub it in, John.
They're now 36, 39, 42, 37. Life will look forward to it with your father. I need just a few, it's been a wonderful thing to hear, but just a few thank yous. My first would be to John Nona, who long ago suggested that I apply for the village justice, an acting village justice position when John Nona was vacating that and moving up to trustee. So I took advantage of his advice, and here I am. I also want to thank Susan Galata and Gigi Collins, who served as acting and associate justices during my tenure. Their, their support and the knowledge helped me immensely. And Kristen Surrace, our assistant court clerk. For her diligence, her good humor, keeping everyone in perspective, everything in perspective. I thank you for all your service. To Patty Dwyer for hiring Stephanie Austin. And to Stephanie Austin. What can I say? The thousand and one reasons why I'm grateful for Stephanie. Mostly for how she got us through the pandemic. She and Will, her husband, who is here today, were essential in setting us up with remote appearances for several lawyers and justices to get together and just judicial system to go forward, even on the local level. Ford was always supportive of everything, and we were able to do it. And I believe I was wearing shorts when you were. You're a sweetheart. I just adore you. You've done so much. You and Will just face it. You're a sweetheart. I just adore you. You've done so much. You and Will just basically took over the technology of the day and made it work when we were able to get justice done all through the pandemic. And I'm gonna mission, I'll be back a lot. And I also want to thank my wife, Beth, and my children for all their support, which I will get into in much greater detail at the dinner. But I do want to thank everyone for the opportunity of having served as village justice this long. And I was going through my papers and came up with a wire that I was handed out at the train station when I went through the elective campaign back, it was twelve years ago. And I hope I lived up to it. I just want to read it to you. "My name is John Curley. I'm running for reelection as village justice. I believe I have the experience and temperament necessary to barely and impartially render justice in the village I know and love. The cases in village court are generally not the type of cases that you see on prime-time dramas or read about in the paper. The issues in each case are very important to the people involved. In more than twenty years on the bench, I've tried to be fair and respectful to everyone who has appeared in the court. I've always been mindful that Pleasantville is a community of neighbors. I've raised my family here. I have volunteered here. The violent values of this community have helped me guide, guide my reasoning and have helped me reach the right decision in many cases. So again, I thank the people of Pleasantville throughout the last thirty-three years for their support and allowing me to act in this really wonderful position. So thank you everybody. And thank you, Mayor, for trying me to speak tonight."
Yes, please.
Okay, I just wanted to say I was a little nervous when I got up and I forgot to thank Dave, my husband, who allows me to do this work and also kind of my children, Beatrice and Reggie, whom I love. But you know, as Judge Curley and everybody who has done these jobs knows, it's a, those are our partners who are taking up the slack when, when, when we are here, working for the village. So, thank you.
Yeah, and same here. I wanted just to give a shout out to the family. I do up here a lot. Can make it today, but I have my Uncle Christian is like a big brother to me. My Mamita Lisa is my grandmother from my mom's side, my cousin Vladdy. And I also have my other grandparents, my Vanita Cruz and my Bobby Nastorio here. Those are my grandparents. So really thankful that they can make it today. My parents are abroad, so they can come, but you know, they're watching through Zoom. So just wanted to give them a shout out for being here as well. Thank you.
So thank you all. John, there aren't any thank yous enough to say thank you, but thank you. I, I think what all of us have heard tonight and what we honestly hear every time we have one of these ceremonies is, or just reinforces my belief that we're at the best level of government. I fully endorse the need for higher levels of government, but I don't think there's any better place to be than a local government, where the missions we all take on get connected to our community, to our neighbors, to our friends, where our staff here at the village become friends and family and where the humanity of us as people can be invested into the work we do. So I thank you all. Welcome back, Nicole. Welcome back, Paul. Welcome, Justice John. Congratulations, John Curley, and a special congratulations to Eric, Alyssa, Noreen, Stephanie, Kristen, just representative of the great folks who worked on behalf of the people who live here in the village of Pleasantville. So we have a thrilling, dry-as-dust sequence of resolutions to deliver tonight and we will take no offense if you all depart the scene. Nicole's family's first in line. So we'll take a brief break of just a couple of minutes and and move on. You get people to sign the oath book, Alyssa. Do you want to get that?
I'm just waiting for whoever's-
I have a presentation for-
Oh, please. Come up front here. Let's make sure we get it captured properly. Come to the podium just so the owl captures you.
There, there? Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you all.
All right, if you can make it official by signing the oath book, we'll come back to our dry-as-dust resolutions in a couple of minutes. It's too late to back out, John. All right, welcome back and we'll try to race through these various announcements. Let me share my screen.
And then there is Nori.
Healy's up for it.
Thanks, Noreen.
All right. All right. Number 104, mayoral appointments. I will read that one. "Resolved the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following persons to the positions listed below for the terms in accordance with village law. Deputy Village Clerk Alyssa Hochstein, one year, term to end April 2024. A Deputy Village Treasurer Healy Shaw, one year, April 2024. Associate Justice Virginia Collins Esquire, one year, April 2024. Prosecutor George Pappas Esquire, one year, April 2024. An Assessor Lloyd Tash, one year, April 2024." Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 105, Paul.
104, is it right?
105.
105, sorry. Okay. "Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby designates Alyssa Hochstein Deputy Village Clerk as the Village Records Access Officer and Eric Morrissey, Village Administrator slash Clerk as the Village Records Appeal Officer."
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 106, Nicole.
"Resolved that the Board of Trustees shall hold their regular meeting at 8:00 PM on the second and fourth Monday of each month, except April, when the organizational meeting shall be the first Monday and shall convene at 7:00 PM. Work sessions shall commence at 7:00 PM on the second and fourth Monday of each month, from May through February, then every Monday at 7:00 PM during the months of March and April. When any such meeting date falls on a legal holiday, the meeting date shall be amended by the Board of Trustees. Location for all in-person meetings of the Board of Trustees will take place at Village Hall, Eighty Wheeler Avenue, second floor, unless otherwise noticed."
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, David, 107.
"Resolved the Board of Trustees hereby sets the following procedure for calling a special meeting by the Board of Trustees. A special meeting can be called by either the mayor or at least two trustees acting together. The Board of Trustees will be contacted by telephone, text, or email. In the event a special meeting is to be called, all attempts will be made to contact the news media and public as soon as practical after calling the special meeting."
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 108, Michael.
"Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby designates the Journal News as the official newspaper for the village of Pleasantville."
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, back to you, 109, Paul.
"Resolved the Board of Trustees hereby approves that the following out-there signatories for financial transactions at all depositories. Peter Shearer, Mayor, Marina Reagan, Treasurer, Healy Shaw, Deputy Treasurer."
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 110, Nicole.
"Resolved that the Bank of New York, JP Morgan Chase Bank, Webster Bank, NA, and my class will be and the same are hereby designated as depositaries for all funds of the village of Pleasantville and it is hereby directed that all funds of the village of Pleasantville shall be deposited in said banks unless otherwise specifically authorized. And be it further resolved that no fund shall be paid by the Treasurer of the village of Pleasantville except pursuant to a judgment of order or an audit and allowance by the Board of Trustees required by law and an order designating some funds signed by the mayor or deputy mayor and countersigned by the Treasurer or in his or her absence by the Deputy Treasurer. And be it further resolved that all checks or drafts or instruments for the withdrawal of money of the village from said depositories shall be signed by the Treasurer. Payment of principal and interest on duly issued bills, bonds, and certificates of indebtedness or tax notes may be paid by the Treasurer without specific order or audit of the Board. Compensation for services of the employees or officers regularly employed by the day, week, month, or year may be paid by the Order of the Treasurer for services actually rendered or performed without-" Wait a minute.
That's right.
Yeah, sorry. "Without specific order or audit of the Board. No wages shall be paid, labors, except on a payroll certified as correct by the official of the village directly in charge of the work for which the money is being expended. And provided further that if the rules of the County Civil Service Commission have been extended to apply such employees or officers by the Treasurer, then the trustee shall not audit any such bills rendered for compensation for services, nor shall the mayor sign or the treasurer countersign any orders for the payment of payroll for such employees or officers until such payroll shall have been submitted to the County Civil Service Commission and certified by it that the payment or employment of said employee or officers is in accordance with civil service law."
Is there a second?
Second.
We do these resolutions after people have taken the oath for fear that they will run the other way screaming. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, 111, David.
"Resolved the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to approve in-state conferences in accordance with general municipal law, section seventy-seven B, and further resolve that all out-of-state conferences shall be approved by resolution of the Board of Trustees."
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 112, Michael.
"Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby sets the standard business mileage rate for transportation expenses for village employees using their personal vehicle for village business as per the rate guidelines set forth by the Internal Revenue Service."
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 113, Matthew Paul.
"Whereas the Board of Trustees is determined to authorize payment in advance of audit of claims for public utility services, postage, credit card merchant fees, freight, and express charges, and whereas all such claims shall be presented at the next regular meeting for audit, and whereas the claimant and officer incurring or approving the same shall be jointly and severally liable for any amount disallowed by the Board of Trustees. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes payment in advance of audit of claims and for public, for public utility services, postage, rights, and express charges, and all such claims shall be presented at the next regular meeting for audit by the Board of Trustees."
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 114, Nicole.
"Resolved that the village treasurer is hereby authorized to implement the village Pleasantville's investment policy which is attached."
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 115, David.
"Resolved the Board of Trustees hereby adopts the village of Pleasantville's purchasing policy."
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, 116, Michael.
"Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby adopts the village of Pleasantville's fiscal policy."
Which is attached. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 117, Paul.
"Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby adopts the village of Pleasantville's credit card policy."
Also attached. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, 118, Nicole.
"Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following village petty cash and confirms the limit on any reimbursement for out-of-pocket expenses to village employees from said funds at $20. Justice court change and reimbursement, $200. Finance department reimburse expenses only. $150 finance department change for payments only. $100 recreation department change and reimburse. $100 village clerk refuse change for payments only. $100 and Clinton Street Center change and reimburse $50."
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 119, David.
"Resolved the Board of Trustees hereby approves the village master fee schedule."
Also attached, all in favor, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 120, Michael.
"Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following employee policies. Anti-arrestment and discrimination policy, cyber breach notification policy, cybersecurity policy, drug-free workplace policy, employee handbook, equal employment opportunity policy, public employer health emergency policy, sexual harassment policy, vehicle use policy, village code of ethics, and workplace violence policy."
Is there a second?
Second.
We are rich with policies. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sneaking the drugs and tampons.
Motion approved. 121, I'll read mayoral assignments for village board liaisons. Pleasantville Fire Department Trustee Paul Alvarez, PCTV, Pleasantville Chamber of Commerce, and Mount Pleasant Library Board, all, Paul Alvarez. Climate Smart Task Force Conservation Advisory Board, Pedestrian and Traffic Safety Committee, Pleasantville Recycles and Sustainable Westchester, all to trustee Nicole Esquith. Foochester Farm Market Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and Planet Commission, all, trustee Michael Pepperd. Pleasantville Union Free School District, Pleasantville Housing Development Corporation and Public Guards Committee, Mayor Peter Shearer. Pleasantville Strong, Beautification Committee, Clinton Street, senior center and senior citizens, zoning board appeals, all, trustee David Virginia Mori. Is there a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve. That being the end of our resolutions, that is the end of our organization night. Welcome back, Nicole. Welcome back, Paul. Really couldn't be more pleased to have you as colleagues over the past six and three years and couldn't be more pleased to work here with this group for other people and with the raft of people that Eric leads in the role of administrator.
Here, here.
Congratulations to all. Is there a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting?
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Nicole. Thank you, our new justice, John Bukel. Congratulations, Pleasantville. A good night for all of us.
Thank you.